Good afternoon, welcome to the Housing Economic Development Committee. I am James Torrance, Chair of the Committee, Representative of Southern Council District. Today, the committee will hold a voting, oh no, not a voting session, an oversight session on LO 250028 Acquisition Strategy and In-Rem Filings, and then Resolution 25003R Informational Hearing Permit Reforms. President in the Council Chamber is Councilwoman Ramos, Vice Chair of the Committee, Representative for the 14th District. Also present is Councilman Jermaine Jones of the 12th District, host of council staff from the Council's President's Office and the Mayor's Office, and then Agency Personnel. Before we get started, if you are a Deputy Commissioner or anyone in leadership of an agency, please sit up at the front. I have direct questions for each member tonight. So if you are a person who reports directly to the Housing Commissioner or the Mayor, you should be seated in the front of this chamber. And if you're a member of BSIT, you should be seated in the front of this chamber. I have direct questions for BSIT as well. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So let's begin with Acquisition Strategy and In-Rem Filings for the purpose of calling relevant city agencies, representatives. Nope, that'll wait. LOs first. Calling relevant city agencies and representatives, as well as third-party stakeholders to review and discuss the city's policies around implementation of the city's strategy to acquire vacant property and conduct in-room. With that being said, this LO was introduced on August 18th, 2025, by Chairperson Torrance. I will belabor my comments and send them over to the Vice Chair, who has a great interest in the subject, and then after that, we'll go into Agency Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, everybody, for being here. The purpose of this oversight is to get a better understanding of all of the acquisition strategies in our quest to be able to address the 12,378 vacant abandoned properties that are on the dashboard right now, and also the several thousand lots, and really work through the process that we need to make sure that they get into the right hands. We'll be talking about all the acquisition strategies, but then also very much focus on in-rem. In-rem is very near and dear to my heart, and I've been able to have the privilege of working with the department on the implementation. And I think it's important that we're transparent with the public about how we're doing, as well as what additional resources we need to ramp up significantly to get to our goal of 200 filings a month, if not more. So that's part of what we're doing here, is to be much more transparent about where we are and the resources that we need to move forward. So I appreciate the time on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. So I now turn it over to the agencies. I know the Law Department's here. I went from the Law Department. They were referred. Okay. Department of Finance? No one's here. They were referred. DHCD's PowerPoint, then.
They borrowed the clicker. They're using it. They'll return it at a later date. I was just, you know, we're going to move forward here. Good evening, everyone. Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner. Good evening, Chairman Torrance, Co-Chair Ramos, and members of the council. Happy to be here this evening to talk about Acquisition Strategy and In-rem Filings. This is, you know, for the opportunity to present on current acquisition strategy, the progress that we've made on in-rem filings. As you know, the work is central to our broader vacancy reduction strategy, and, you know, really turning long-term vacant properties into productive use and opportunities for redevelopment and the work that we need to do around Reframe Baltimore. So we're going to walk through some of the tools, the data, staffing capacity that make it possible, and look forward to fruitful conversation on kind of where we are, where we need to go, and different pieces on that. This is one, again, where we're, you know, happy to be here, to be a part of this because of the importance that this has on the work that we're doing to eliminate vacancies and over the next 15 years. So on the next slide, we're going to go through the agenda real quick in terms of, it covers six key areas: acquisition tools, some of the mapping, in-rem filings, capacity, legal coordination, and growth opportunities. And, you know, these will show kind of how we're doing different available pathways to be able to move properties, you know, from basically, to create a solution for those properties. In terms of authority, we use two primary legal pathways for acquisition, which are the General Acquisition Authority that covers negotiated sale, purchase, condemnation, donation, and then the tax lien foreclosure, which is both tax-for-sale foreclosure and the judicial in-rem foreclosure. These allow us to act through these different tools to be able to acquire properties for redevelopment. Sometimes that redevelopment, it may be redevelopment, it may be green space, it may be a number of different uses, but these are the tools that allow us to acquire the vacant properties and vacant lots. On the next slide, we're going to talk, start talking a little bit about kind of equity, eligible parcels, mapping, block-level planning, like where is this work happening in the city? And where does it have an impact on our residents and where we're working on it? You know, the next slide is an overview of, I think many have seen this slide before. It's Baltimore, I apologize for the weird text showing up on that. It is predominant race by census tract on the left side, which you can clearly see the black butterfly in the, in the green. Then on the right-hand side is a heat map that shows the VBN density. And you can very clearly see that overview of the VBN density being high in our predominantly black neighborhoods that have the history of redlining, block busting, and have had a history of population loss over the years. You know, this data guides, it guides investments, it guides the plan, it guides the process and what we're doing. On the next slide, it's going to talk a little bit about more geographic overlay in terms of the, what is called now the vacant reduction priority geographies. So it started with the impact investment areas, which Broadway East, Johnson Square, Southwest, Park Heights, the West IIA, which includes Penn North, Druid Heights, and Upton. But when we were starting to implement the framework for community development and really get into work with the communities, you know, there were communities that were adjacent to the IIAs that were in different stages of work, and we started to call those kind of our, you know, emerging community community organizations or groups that still needed some more work. All of this, when we were looking at putting together actually what was the need across the city to abate vacant buildings over the next 15 years and create kind of that $3 billion capital stack that is behind the Reframe Baltimore, it expanded to include our vacant reduction priority geographies, which you'll see here on the map, which pick up additional geographies as well as a larger portion of West North Avenue Development Authority, and then it goes down also into Carrollton Ridge, Boyd Booth. You pick up Brooklyn, Curtis Bay, Westport, et cetera. So the strategy, you know, is, is community-led, it's community-driven. We work with communities to help them achieve their neighborhood plans, their impacts and output. On the next slide, this, we'll talk a little bit about that in terms of, we start with asset mapping, look at market conditions, and then we work on block-level planning, which really is parcel-level planning that helps us drive the, you know, goal of achieving whole-block outcomes, where every vacant property is addressed on the block, where we know the vacant lots have a use or are addressed and are working through those. And what has also happened and has been a change in block-level planning over the years is that acquisition has actually shifted. So in the last five years, we've actually shifted more from seeing communities as well as others wanting to see more acquisition of the vacant properties versus demolition of the vacant properties. So that is one reason why acquisition numbers, and this is important, is because that's actually kind of shifted over the years in terms of what we've seen. More and more communities want less demolition, more acquisition, more rehabilitation of, of those properties. And then, you know, that moves into creating, on the next slide, you'll see kind of how that aligns with, this is an example of Broadway East. You know, what we work on is priority blocks, how many VBNs, how many lots are in those, you know, and then what that plays out within the zones. So each area has different zones, starting with Zone 1, working from strength with the community and moving forward. And this block-level planning is also what drives kind of the acquisition methods and the pipeline of acquisition as well. So if you're on a block and there's five vacant properties, those vacant properties, it might be that three are in-rem eligible, one is already a private tax sale, tax sale case, and the other one is negotiation or condemnation. You might have another block where there's only two that are in-rem eligible, and we might be looking at several that are under permit already or where actually where receivership might end up being at use and in play as well, which is not an acquisition tool, but a code enforcement tool. So all of that helps us actually create and look at what acquisition methods are needed, what acquisition method are we going to use, where does that fall? And then kind of where does that fall in terms of helping to achieve whole-block outcomes? On the next slide, it just kind of gives an overview of what I was talking about in terms of how those strategies are identified, the community engagement piece, and the development partners as well. On the next slide, we're going to look and start to talk about the status specifically of in-rem filings. So all, all of the progress right now is publicly tracked on the Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment Council Dashboard. The Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment Council is a state council. This was formed by the governor by executive order. DHCD, City DHCD created the dashboard to provide, you know, public information for the council in partnership with the Maryland State Department of Housing Community Development. And so a lot of the city data rolls up, actually, all the city data rolls up into the BVRC dashboard. And there, you can see on a regular basis kind of where we are with status of in-rem filings and status of other acquisition methods as well. So everybody, residents, council members, can see exactly kind of where they are and how many properties. You can also sort on the BVRC dashboard by council district, and there's some other tools in there that you can kind of dig in a little bit further. On the next slide, we also have kind of the acquisition status overall, what has been completed, this is fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25 to date, that shows, as you can see, in-rem foreclosure has started, you know, very clearly taking the lead in terms of the key tool that we're using, and that is because of the fact that it is the least expensive tool outside of donation that we have, donation being even more of a least expensive donation, and then in-rem foreclosure because it is the staff time for attorneys. We have the cost of the title examination, and then you have our title attorneys and attorneys that have to do the work. On the next slide, we show a little bit more data. This is acquisition status by council district. So this shows both the council district, the active acquisitions, the acquisitions completed since July 1st of 2023, and what are the active in-rem foreclosure cases and what is completed in-rem foreclosure cases by council district as well. And, you know, as Council District 7, 9, and 12 have seen some of the highest volume that we have seen in, in some of those numbers, especially in terms of active in-rem cases. On the next slide, these are some of the statuses underway in terms of the pipeline that we currently have for in-rem foreclosure, negotiation, donation. I want to state that negotiation, we always start with trying to just negotiate a purchase of a vacant property if it is not in-rem eligible. And if we cannot successfully negotiate, meaning if they refuse or if they don't accept, or they're not willing to work with us, or the person is deceased or defunct, then that's when we have to move it towards a condemnation case to move that through, through in partnership with the Law Department on the condemnation pathway. On the next slide, this is just a summary of the different types of acquisition and where we are in terms of what stage has different numbers associated with how many properties currently are in that pipeline and filling out. As you can see, we have all available to, so we're using in-rem, we're doing donations. I also want to remind everybody that when we're acquiring a property, that we also have to acquire that leasehold, which is why we also negotiate ground rents and have to do condemnation on ground rents as well when that comes into play. So that's considered a separate additional acquisition activity tied to that same property. Each, you know, as you can see too, the title for in-rem in terms of, you know, pipeline that we showed on that other previous page where we've had title work, what's assigned for filing, what has been filed, and where we are with judgments and post-judgment filing. On the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about capacity and where we are. So overall, in terms of the Development Division in the Land Management Section, Deputy Commissioner Redfern, who is here, as well as Assistant Commissioner Tamera Woods, there's overall 29 team members covering our development and outreach team, the relocation and donation, land transactions, project development. And we have currently three vacancies that are being filled. On the next slide, this is where our legal section comes into play. We now have 31 team members on that legal section side. This side has grown twofold, threefold in the last three years. It has, you know, we now have 13 filing attorneys. There's actually one opening. We had an opening come up just last month, so that is a new, we were fully staffed on the attorneys, but now have one new opening. Five title attorneys. I want to highlight the title attorney piece. This was a key piece that we did strategically when looking at the pipeline to be able to file in-rem cases. One of the barriers previously to being able to file was the timeliness of receiving the title examinations from title, outside title companies. So what we did was, we now get the title abstract, but then we have in-house title attorneys that are doing those examinations, which allows for a more streamlined and efficient process of completing those examinations, being able to work with the filing attorneys on any questions or clarifications that come up in that title examination, and to help ensure that the paralegals and the attorneys have the appropriate information that's fully needed to be able to post-notice and, and complete the filings necessary. On the next slide, this kind of just shows some of the trend that we've seen on the ramp-up of cases that have been filed. You know, it was new. This is one of those things where we actually, you know, the city had passed and adopted the in-rem legislation in 2019? It was 2020. It was, yeah, that was before, it was just before the pandemic, 2020. It was that first quarter of 2020 when the in-rem legislation passed. But then we hit the pandemic, the courts were closed, we had a backlog, and it really wasn't until 2022 that we were able to work with the Circuit Court to start looking at how this process for in-rem filings, you know, would occur. So right now, you know, one of the key things is just the caseload in general. Per attorneys, they're filing about six to eight cases. But what this really is, is that they're holding a caseload of like around 50 cases, 50 to 60 cases, and it's as you push that caseload above 60 is when you start to get, it just becomes somewhat untenable for the attorneys and the paralegals. So we're in that process. We're also been looking for efficiencies with the attorneys. Some attorneys have found some efficiencies on, you know, just the way that they're doing some of their work. But that's where we are at this point. On the next slide, you know, we're going to talk a little bit just about legal coordination. You know, there's two different ways that we're thinking about legal coordination. One is legal coordination within DHCD. So a big piece of legal coordination has been between our Development Division attorneys and our code enforcement attorneys, with the code enforcement attorneys working on receivership to ensure that, you know, we're, we're not duplicating efforts that, that block-level planning that highlights what the strategy is, you know, that we could clearly, and if that strategy needs to change, how best to make sure that everybody knows that that strategy changed for whatever reason, and move that forward. The other piece of legal coordination is with the, with the courts. And, you know, how we're looking at what we can do. The city in this year's budget has provided funding to support expanding court capacity. Director Larson of BBMR is actively working on helping to move that forward. I know, Councilwoman Ramos, this is something near and dear to your heart, and efforts in terms of helping us as well on moving that forward, as well with Solicitor Thompson and those conversations with, with the court and capacity there. So that is the other piece of kind of that legal coordination. We've had discussions for several years now on, with Solicitor Thompson, on the potential for additional legal coordination, whether or not that be through utilizing pro bono legal resources or like a clinic or something along those lines. There's a number of things that, you know, could potentially happen with that. Some of the experiences that occurred on previous efforts with outside was quality of work, and some of those cases having issues or not being able to be filed. We're also confirming pro bono attorney being able to actually file the case on behalf of the city, because that would be one of the key things. We actually need to make sure that they can actually file, because if they're doing some work but not filing, or are we looking for pro bono title work or working through those questions? And then we would just need to go through the ethics pathway in order to solicit pro bono attorneys. We have to complete that paperwork and be able to do that in terms of soliciting that. So I think that that's another piece of legal coordination. Those conversations have been had. They've been happening over the last several years, but there've been some stops and starts due to other pieces of processes and other things that have come up, you know, just in terms of moving things forward. But that's an active conversation and happy to have additional conversations with the council and members of the council about that as well. So we want to talk next about growth opportunities. There are a couple of things, you know, right now in terms of overall acquisition outside of in-rem on the next slide. You know, one of the key items is the fiscal year '25 Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment Initiative funding for negotiations and condemnations. Our fiscal year '25 ask to the state was extremely heavy on acquisitions because it requires money. And we have not had the money that has been needed in the past to fully be able to fulfill whole-block outcomes and really do those acquisitions at scale for negotiation and condemnation. So it was very heavy on, on acquisition dollars in terms of our ask for the fiscal year '25. That funding agreement will be on the Board of Estimates November 5th. It's a multi-year funding agreement, so it'll cover fiscal year '25 as well as fiscal year '26 and into fiscal year '27 for BVRI funds. But we're still also working with the state on what that looks like moving forward, given some of the state's shift in providing funding directly to the community development organizations for acquisition as well. And we're actively coordinating with the state on that. But this is one of those things, the acquisitions that we completed in fiscal year '25, we completed those acquisitions and exceeded targets. You know, those targets, we, we've completed, and the success that we have had has been so far without the, the vacancies, the state BVRI funding. But we are very much looking forward to that. And the team has actually already started work on those acquisitions on the list in terms of prepping for title and appraisals and other components that are needed for those negotiations. We also have increased coordination that is occurring just with other agencies on acquisitions, one of those being with the Finance Department on lien release process that will help us with acquisitions on in-rem, as well as some of our other acquisitions that then will also help us on the disposition side, which I know will be another hearing at another date, but all of it does tie together. We're also going to be doing a new full procurement for additional title companies, which will help us to expand some of the capacity on the examination, the title examination, and expand capacity there. Like I mentioned earlier, we still have some growth opportunities to work on the, you know, Circuit Court capacity and where we are as we continue to ramp up and file more cases and have that ability to file more cases, you know, keeping to be able to have them have the ability to move that forward. And then, you know, we also are reimagining and looking at the workflow and staff assignments for acquisition and disposition, and kind of reimagining that workflow, who's responsible with, for what pieces and parts, and, and moving that forward. So in closing, on the last slide, you know, just every acquisition that we do complete, we know that it is another step towards a stronger, more equitable Baltimore. We're, you know, have a great team that is driving this work daily. You know, Assistant Commissioner Joe Kerschner, I can't say enough about his fortitude, I think is a great way to put it, and his just kind of unwavering work on helping us get in-rem to where it is today. And Deputy Commissioner Redfern kind of coming in and also supporting on that work. We also have our managing attorney, Kanita Williams, on that staff on the in-rem side. But really, it's, it's, it's been a process, and we're really pleased as to where we are now. Doesn't mean that we don't have more to go or, or more to do or can look at increasing capacity. But coming out to where we are right now, I think it's a good place. And, you know, we're really taking the opportunity on the acquisition to tackle each property and create the whole-block outcomes that we all want to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, and as a person who has benefited from in-rem, thank you. So my first question is more so related to capacity. If I believe, and I'm referring to my notes from past budget hearings, we were paying for over 50 attorneys, but there are not 50 attorneys identified in the capacity for that office. That was the stated number, if my colleague, I believe it's 50.
Fifty?
We had 50 positions.
No, we, Mr. Chair, we, there was an additional $1.2 million added to the budget that was supposed to be for DHCD's strategy, and we still hadn't received what that was going to be. There certainly needs to be more lawyers, for sure. But we, I think we got some information from the budget responses as to how those positions would be used. Some of the, most of them are for the attorneys. But I don't recall, I mean, I would love to have 50 attorneys. We'd be kicking butt if that was the case, but that wasn't a number that I recall from the budget. It was definitely 1.2 million that was added to the budget for this process, and that was actually going to be one of my questions as to how we used it.
Well, and, and the 1.2 million was added not just for acquisition. It was added for all of the components that we need to do for vacancy reduction. So we have additional, the 1.2 is, we have additional attorney, additional paralegals. Also, real estate agent is needed for both the acquisition and the disposition side, additional real estate agents there. So we can provide the exact breakdown for you on those. But it, the 1.2 was never meant or was not funding 50.
I just want to make sure, because I had staff review the videos, and the number 50 flowed around the videos from budget hearings, just FYI.
I think what we had talked about, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, is that... I think what we had talked about, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, is that, you know, there definitely needs to be a real understanding of what is really needed to really scale up because the numbers are not absolutely not where we needed them to be, particularly since the stated goal right at the moment is filing 200 cases and we're only filing between 70 maybe a month. And so there's a, there's a lot more to go. I I'm presuming that the 50 number comes from sort of our work to to try to get as much capacity as possible. In that, I agree that we need capacity, no question. And I'd have to look back at my notes to to see where the 50 might come.
I can actually give you the actual timestamp and actual hearing from the budget hearing when it was said, just to be transparent with you. But that's why I asked the question because I wanted to know because the numbers do, I just want to make sure the numbers are where they are because the capacity is 200. But also, have you guys opt, actually, given the efficiencies that some of your attorneys have actually created, have you looked at what is the optimal caseload or ratio of cases to attorneys right now so that you can get to the 200?
So the existing attorneys in terms of 13 filing attorneys, 13 filing attorneys right now would not get us to 200. You know, and even with some of those efficiencies, we're looking at that six to eight filings per month with a caseload of about 60 at a time. So, you know, I'll turn it over to to Joe and Wendy if they have anything to state on that side. But given kind of what we've been learning about the cases, some of the efficiencies that we're looking at are third-party notice production, which would assist on some efficiencies related to just staff time, but we don't know actually if that would allow more cases to be put onto the caseload. But that is one of the areas that we're also looking at is third-party notice production. But I don't know if Joe or Wendy want to talk a little bit about.
Sure. Hi, Joe Kirschner, Assistant Commissioner for the Legal Section. I think what we've noticed so far is, and we have some attorneys who are filing as many as 10 cases, but when you, when you do that, then what you're carrying, cases take on average a little less than six months. So if you start carrying more than eight, 60, then keeping up with all the deadlines, keeping up with all the notice requirements, keeping track of all the defendants, there's a chance you're going to miss something and maybe then it's going to take longer for your cases to get completed. So right now, and you know, with efficiencies, we might be able to increase that number, but right now, between 50 and 60, and quite a few of our attorneys that are currently, the 13, have started really since June, so we haven't even really ramped up to to that full amount. And there's a learning curve, so I don't know if that's helpful information.
Have we looked at any software capacity that you can build through typically that they have at general law firms that basically can help you with acquiring to help with those filings and keeping pack, keeping track of everything?
We actually already, that was one of the first things we did was invest in the software package that would be able to track the the legal cases and the filings.
Okay. Generally, I have questions related to BVRI funding delay. How has that really impacted your timelines?
It has impacted, it has impacted timelines because properties that we had thought that we would have already had started some of the negotiation or acquisition on in, say, maybe even in January of 2025, those activities really won't really begin to start now until January of 2026. So we're probably about a full year behind. So the state made the official award announcement in the fall of, in the fall of 2024. And then they're provided us with a draft document like in February, March of executing. And then there's been back and forth because the MOU that you'll see that goes to the Board of Estimates, it's actually a three-party MOU that's between us, State DHCD, and the Maryland Stadium Authority. So I would say it's put us behind about a year in terms of timeline.
That's drastic.
And I would say that it's a year in terms of timeline of tackling those acquisitions that are on the list that is the BVRI approved property list, not necessarily a year in timeline for the reduction of vacancies.
Okay, so you mentioned that the majority of your attorneys have been in since June. Have we seen any turnover in those positions?
We have just the one attorney that vacated, that was a personnel issue that vacated the position in August.
Yeah, I mean, when you have that many attorneys, sometimes they they come and go. So that's going to be a, something we're going to have to stay on top of. But of the, any, the folks hired since June, there's just the one, didn't work out.
Okay. And then what about the capacity of the filings for the work for the paralegals? How are we managing their workload too? Because everyone has a law degree, knows paralegals do the most of the legwork anyway, so how are we using them?
Yeah, I'll try to answer that. So there's a lot of paperwork with these cases. We're required to send notice before we file the case. We're required to send notice within five days after we file the case. And then we set up with the court a system where if we, we need service of process on each person with an interest in the property. So if we make three attempts by mail, then the court will allow us to basically rest on the posting and publication. So that's, if we're not getting service, that's three mailings in addition to the other two. And so they're doing a lot of work, you know, processing mail, keeping track of what comes back and then interacting with the attorneys. I think what we've found so far is that you would see that we have fewer paralegals than attorneys. So we're finding that's working right now. You know, if we need to adjust, we'll try to do that. But right now, that's something like 1.3 paralegals per attorney seems to be working.
So, and and I'm just thinking about efficiencies because my office in relationship to Stockton Street had us send similar notices to people, so we use the municipal post office and their digital system. Are you guys using that digital system that tracks the certified mail and the requirements for it? And then is it then sending the email back to you with the actual service of it? Because I'm just wondering, because this sounds like this is manual, but we're paying a large sum of money to have a database that allows us to track it. So just wondering if you noticed that that could have been an efficiency that you could have taken care of.
Yeah, I think that's one of the efficiencies we're working on. So right now, the system is is really heavily involved with paralegals sending the mail. You know, we use, it's e-certified, so it's an electronic. But they're doing all that work of dropping mail off in the in the mailbox. And one of the efficiencies we're looking at is getting a third-party mailer who I think might help increase the number of cases an attorney could manage. But we haven't gotten there quite yet, but that's something.
So you haven't had a conversation with the post office that we're all paying money for that I just told you my office used to do the same work that your paralegals are doing? So literally, we dropped it in the mailbox, we put a certified thing on there, they scanned it into the system. A staff person in my office got an email when it was cert, when it actually went out and got a response back. I'm just making sure because.
That's the system.
Why pay a third party to do this when we already pay for it? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Sure.
Because it sounds like party A is walking outside, going down to the blue mailbox and dropping it off or going to the central post office. I just want to make sure.
No, 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 we have a, we have a, he said, the same system you described is what we have. But we still do have to drop off our mail in the lobby. Because our packets, the notice we're sending, has copies of everything we filed in the courts. So it's, it's paper-heavy.
Okay, I'll defer to the vice chair for the, for this round, this next round.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I want to thank you all for ticking this on and really, I think we're, we're doing as well as we can. I was just trying to do the algebra here. My daughter's in algebra. I took algebra a long time ago, so I will figure out that problem in just a minute in terms of how many attorneys we're actually going to need based on the caseload. But I wanted to ask about, one of the things that we had been talking about in the delivery chain meetings for BVRC was this issue of actually removing the prefile notice because that's in our law, but it's not in the state law. And I was curious what the, because that could free up a lot of time and energy and money. But I wondered what your thoughts were on it because I, we still, I don't have a straight answer on that quite yet. So that was one of the questions I had.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And we're always trying to find ways to be as efficient as we can. I, I think you're referring to the post file, the the post-filing service. So we, we're required to send pre-filing notice, basically saying, this is how much you owe. And if you don't pay within 30 days, we can file a case. That one, I think, is going to be required. The five-day post-filing notice is something we've really looked at and it's just extra paper. Since we do have service of process, it seems like an unnecessary extra step. The, the heart of the notice that we provide is this post-filing, getting writs from the court, doing the mailings. And and that's, based on the case management system, it doesn't seem like it's going to save us any time. We're getting most of our judgments these days after our first hearing. So there's a lot of work that can be done before that first hearing. It's 120 days from the date of the scheduling order, which is usually within 130 days of when we file. And we're, we're not struggling with that part. So in addition, what we like about this and I think what the title industry likes about this is that when we're done and we get title, that's insurable title. It's, the property is basically ready to be redeveloped. And I think there are other jurisdictions that do it a little differently. And those, the people who end up receiving disposition of that title, they've got to do things like first check and see if they can use the property for security interest. And, you know, sometimes the lenders won't let them because they're concerned about these interests that didn't get actual notice. So that's, that's one of the things, I guess, that seems to be a big deal, just getting title insurance. We did call and speak with the State Council for Fidelity National, which I think underwrites a lot of the, most of the titles here in Baltimore. And they advised us that that step would make them shy about, you know, insuring title at the end of it.
I, I appreciate that. I was just trying to figure out because our law is slightly different than the state's authorizing and whether or not taking out the one step that we put in that the state didn't put in made made any sense. I know when we, when I did file the bill and we talked about it last time, that was something that was talked about. And I've since talked with some of the title attorneys who are now getting used to INREM. I think at the time, people weren't used to it yet, whether or not that that makes a difference. What I, what I'm trying to do in thinking about that is the, the process from filing to judgment, I'm not even worried about, right? It's happening. It goes through the court process. It's all very much dictated by the code and by the courts. It's this pipeline that you have here of 700 cases and then how many you're actually processing that I'd like to try to shorten up a little bit and make more efficient in a way that, so that you can process more, so we have more to give. And so that, I guess, my question is, what would be your recommendation? If you want to try to sort of have less to do during that time? Or is it simply a matter of capacity and you just need 20 more lawyers to to get, to get that done?
Yeah, I mean, I think the the bottlenecks that we have encountered and tried to fix was, one, having the title examinations done in-house.
And that was done and that, I think, is working super.
Yeah, and and we have added, and so from time to time when we're preparing this, you know, we have, we have this huge amount of cases that we're trying to file, we found that we don't have enough title attorneys to keep up. So that's why we're at five now. So that was, that's one thing that we, we, we found we needed. Reducing, I, I don't think it's a good idea to reduce that pre-filing to eliminate that because that is the first notice somebody gets and it's basically a statement of the liens and our, basically our right to file the case. And I, I didn't ask about that, but I, I, I think that would be considered problematic. You know, filing a case without even any warning from DHCD seems like it would be a problem. That, that post-filing five-day, we're finding if we don't get writs in time, it's just an extra mailing. So that's one we think we could get rid of. I know we'd have to go back to the state to do it, but I think we could get rid of that. It would, you know, reduce by 25% or at least 20%.
Yeah, that one we'd have to go back to the state for. That one we can't control here. And I, we should have a conversation about whether now's the right time to do that. But also, I think we need a little bit more time under our belt, frankly, before we, we do that. But, okay, and I also know that the five-day notice posting has been a challenge and the, so we just need to think about that. Okay, that, that's helpful for that discussion. I had a quick question and then I'll, I'll yield for my colleagues until the next round. In one of the slides, there's a, there's a description of 28 priority blocks. And this is not for Mr. Kirschner, this is for the, the Commissioner. I thought that we, that at the BVRC, we're talking about 310 or 308?
This is just the example for Broadway East.
That's just for Broadway East? Okay, gotcha. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Sorry if that wasn't clear. I was using Broadway East as the example. That is just Broadway East.
Got, I didn't look at the heading properly, so that's fine. But we're still at that sort of 310, you know, number for priority blocks for the, for the work of the Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment work and your work, basically. You're really concentrating on those, on those blocks.
Yes, and then there's additional blocks for fiscal year 26.
Right, right. The frustration, I think, that I have and I've expressed this is just that, I, I understand, well, I, I don't really, but I mean, it would be really amazing to understand where those are, particularly the council members know where their priority blocks are. I mean, I think most of us do know if we've been working with you. But I do think it makes a difference because then, just like with the 1600 block of Gorsuch, we had, which was sort of one of our test blocks for INREM, so I'm glad that it's, you know, moving forward. But the houses in between, even though we acquired through INREM most of the block, you know, two of the others that we couldn't acquire actually got rehabbed. Now, they didn't get rehabbed with permits, which is a different issue. But we, but that would not have happened if we weren't making a big deal about that block. So I think some transparency would be helpful just to be able to understand what's really happening, how we can be helpful with resources, where are the, the older adults in those blocks so that we can help with home repair, which we talked about a little bit the other day, and, and understand a little bit better about, about what's happening and how all of us can be helpful to the strategy. Again, I, you know, I, no, mine, I'm sure my other colleagues know theirs. But I think that the other partners in the area definitely need to know what those are.
I'll take that into consideration and go back and talk with MoDR and the mayor's office and we'll get back to you on that.
I can make it easier for you. Could you provide a monthly district-level breakdown? Well, like filed, completed, pending cases, so that it gives the council members like an overview and they have specifics? They can ask you that way. I can tell you best off of looking at my filings which blocks are, which blocks. But I think that might be the easiest way to do it because then it's intuitive. Like I know how many cases are being filed and you have the data already anyway. So it's easier just like if you just shoot it as a monthly report like somebody does for, for recovery. I think that'd be easier too because then people can kind of sense what are the priorities.
I think that we'll be able to do that. I want, before I commit 100%, I just want to check with the team on if we can meet a 30-day turnaround or.
Even if it's bimonthly, just.
45-day or 60, like something, but.
Yeah, like if things are fluid.
Work on that, on filed cases and and judgments. Work on that, on filed cases and judgments.
As well as the priority blocks.
I'm trying to allude that you could probably predict the priority blocks by the filings.
I'm talking about the filing.
I mean, I'd rather have that, that data, frankly. I've been asking for it for a long time, in terms of what, what the pipeline looks like in the filings.
So we'll work on it together.
Yeah, I'm going to go back, talk with the team, review that, and see what we can do on providing the, what has been filed and the judgments we've received in a kind of 30 to 60-day timeframe.
I think that's fine. Thank you.
I mean, I would be interested in the pipeline also, by district, like, where it is.
Yes. Good evening, Shema, currently Deputy City Administrator. This is not my lane, but I know enough to be dangerous. I would like, if the commissioner could just talk a little bit about judge staff. There's been a lot of conversation about more filings, but more filings doesn't necessarily mean resolution, because we don't have a lot of judges. So I would like, and I think that's important for the public to understand, that even if we fill the docket, we still have to have someone that hears cases and does those things. So I would just like for the commissioner to, or someone from DHCD, just to note that, so that, so that our public...
I can actually talk about that. So we did get some money in the budget to add to the, to the staffing capacity for the courts. And the state also matched that money to be able to support the magistrate. So we've already started those conversations to make sure that the, the court capacity is, is expanded.
Well, my understanding is that the state funding is one-time, unless I'm misunderstanding?
No, that's been confirmed. That is multi-year.
When and by whom?
By the chairman and the speaker's office. Yeah, we had this conversation last week about this. So that is not one-time funding. Speaker's office is to call the courts to let them know that that is the case. We, Director Larson and I had a conversation with the courts the other day. So they're supposed to get back to us with a revised MOU based on this new information.
Okay. So even with the increased funding, I think it's still important for the public to understand that what happens after filings, right? And so right now, I think we only have, is it one judge that is listening, that is hearing in REM cases? Are there more?
There's one magistrate.
Magistrate.
Okay. Yeah. There's, there's one magistrate that is hearing cases. And I think it's a combination of the magistrate, as well as the support staff, that is needed to be able to handle the increased capacity. So when I talked about on the capacity slide, I mentioned, and probably could have gone a little bit deeper into that, that even if a golden egg of a money ball fell onto the floor in front of us right now, and we were able to hire, you know, 10 more title attorneys and 30 more filing attorneys, and be doing that, that, that would push the court to a capacity that they would not be able to handle. So while we do have information on what we have that's funded by the state and what's funded by the city, and we know that that will assist with capacity, one of the things, too, is, like, being able to work with the court to expand, I think, you know, and I don't want to, if Joe wants this to happen, that we've talked about being able to have additional days on the calendar to be able to file, which needs to be an additional magistrate, not just additional court staff. And I think that that's part of the conversation right now as well, which is that we actually need additional magistrate, not just the court staff, so that while we're doing what we need to do, they're able to be responsive. I will say that when this first started, the courts, you know, had capped us at filing. They wanted us to only file, like, 20, 25 cases a month. And the directive from myself to Assistant Commissioner Kershner and the staff was, you know, to file as many cases as we could file, so that we can continue to show our capacity increasing, our efficiencies increasing, which in turn would help the court understand what they need to be thinking about in terms of their workflow, their processes, and their improvements on their side as well.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I will make sure that we are continuing that conversation. We're waiting for the courts to come back to us. But, yeah, I mean, there's a concerted effort to, to make this happen, because we know that, and to the courts' credit, I mean, they're taking this very seriously and are really excited to be a part of this work. So I'm, I'm happy for that as well. And I'll go ahead and pass it to one of my other colleagues.
Colleagues, Councilman Jones. Sorry, Councilman Blanchard of the 11th District has joined us, and Councilman Parker of the 1st District has joined us. Now, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. If you could just take a look at the acquisition status sheet by council district, had a quick question regarding that. First, just for clarification, the active acquisitions, is that acquisition by, you know, I guess, purchase or other? Just curious of what that number includes when you say active acquisitions.
That would be acquisitions that are all acquisition. Do you, yeah, that would be all acquisitions. So that would be the completed acquisitions that are negotiation, condemnation, the ground-rank condonations, and donations.
Okay, basically, everything other than INREM?
The INREM. And then the INREM is in the other.
Got you. All right. I guess, so to my question, I couldn't help but to look at District 12 and look at the completed INREM cases, and it just looked a little low compared to other council districts. And how many active INREM? Could you explain, like, the process of, or why that may happen, and how we can kind of increase the amount of actually completed foreclosed INREM cases? Because as I looked through the list recently of eligible INREM properties, there's a vast number of properties in which the liens are way more than, that are, I'll just say, INREM-eligible. And I would love to see more of those actually active, because I think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity there. But not only just active, but completed, and what can we do to kind of get that ball rolling?
I think that we're actively getting that ball rolling in every council district that has a high concentration of vacant property. So as I mentioned before, you know, the, the plan is, it is a plan. It is a strategic plan. It's a strategic implementation plan within the impact investment areas, within the vacant reduction priority geographies, down to the blocks and the block level of where that work needs to happen, and kind of also working with the development partners, and kind of timing and strategy, and what was where, and who was, who was where, and who's on first, and who's ready, and where that falls. So as you can see, there's 184 cases that right now are active. There is a significant, you know, number of other cases coming on, and part of that will, you know, continue to see that ramp up in a district, like District 12, like Chairman's district, that have those high concentrations of vacant properties, and what we're able to move through INREM. The other piece is, is that in some of the districts, on some of the priority blocks that we've been working on for a number of years, we've, because this was based on priority blocks for, like, 2025, and some of those whole-block outcomes that we're trying to reach and move forward, some of those, actually, the assessed value is higher, which is one reason why the number of acquisition method through condemnation, negotiation, had a higher funding level for BVRI funds, is because we've already started to see in some of the neighborhoods that we've been working in for the last 10 years, that as we've been developing the framework for community development, as we've been developing, you know, the, the block level planning, a whole-block outcome, we're already seeing the assessed values creeping up. So especially in areas that might have been in a Zone 1, that have had a high concentration of effort of demolition, or other acquisition, or other activities happening. So that could also be some of the, you know, reasoning behind some of that number that you're seeing now. So I would say, it isn't just about the INREM, but we have to look at the entire kind of acquisition pipeline as a whole as well.
I completely agree with your understanding perspective. It's just even from a strategic standpoint, a lot of the neighborhoods that were highlighted, that were focused on, that had that strategic approach, were in District 12. So I would assume that they would be more completed INREM in some sense, if that was a little more...
Not necessarily, because in some of those areas that are District 12, in some of those neighborhoods, the assessed value has started to creep up already. So in order to be eligible for INREM, the liens have to be greater than the assessed value. And also, in some of those neighborhoods, as we've been working in those neighborhoods for the last 10 years, and then really ramping up over the last, you know, five years, there's also been a number of private homeowners, property owners, just going ahead and doing their own renovations as well. So it has shifted. So especially when you think about those Zone 1s within the different geographic areas that we've been working on, there's a lower number of INREM-eligible in those, and those were, like, the priorities.
I would just say, it's not as much about the value of the property, because even when we look at the INREM-eligible property list, it's a lot of them in this District 12. And when we look at the, the assessed value, and I would hope we could, you know, kind of do a little more focus on the ones that are eligible for that, and kind of ramp that up as much as possible.
We're looking at all of the districts that have that. I mean, this is one piece of ramping up and continuing to do the work. I mean, we have a high concentration of properties in a number of the council districts that are key priorities for us to achieve outcomes that we need to achieve.
Can I bridge the gap? So is it possible, so that, as the council requests, that Councilman Jones gets, I had someone do this data for me, myself, where you get a heat map of where you've seen an increase in assessed values compared to last year to now around the INREM-eligible properties. That way, people can see that, and I noticed this in my own district, because I had, and I, and the only reason why I ran this data is because after the people received their new appraisals from the state, that's when a lot of properties went out of INREM eligibility. And I think that would be informative for you to see in your own district, too. Because once those, once those happen, because we have, I think your three years for your portion, your district is coming up again. So it may actually knock out additional properties that may be eligible. So I think that would be helpful for him.
Thank you. And I think because of that, it's soon, it's important that we ramp up the process soon.
We can create that map. And we can look at it as well for all, equally, for all of the council districts as a, as a piece of data to, to show, which I think provides. We love maps.
And just one, one other question, and I apologize, Mr. Chair, if this is a little off-topic, but just want to take an opportunity to follow up. While I think it's great that we get these properties, have acquisition of them, just want to hear a little bit more about, once we get the property, what does that look like, to make sure it's being transformed into something. Because what, the frustration I get sometimes is when I get calls from constituents, and different people in the district that complains about a house, a property, and lo and behold, it's owned by the city. While I know that's not the case, and that's been less and less the case, but I think when you hear folks who are interested in certain communities, are interested in developing and wanting to be a part of the process, when we have properties that are just sitting there. Because then, when you look them up, they're not necessarily on the vacant-to-value site. They aren't here, and just trying to figure out how, what does that process look like, and how we can make that work.
So I know, I don't want to spend...
Too much.
Too much, because I believe that this is a topic of another here, hearing coming up, where we'll go into more detail on it. But essentially, there's multiple different ways that we do disposition. Deputy Commissioner Redfern and her team just completed the, a multi-neighborhood request for qualifications with a number of developers that are covered in that, especially in, in your district. There's been kind of an evaluation of what is city-owned. We own about nine, just over 900 properties. Out of the 12,388 that are vacant, we currently own just over 900. We actively, regularly do disposition. Some of the properties still are not ready to be disposed of, because they're still sandwiched in between vacant properties. And it doesn't make sense for us to dispose of a city-owned property that's still is sandwiched into be, between a vacant property, or between 12 vacant properties, while we're still figuring out some of those components. So some of the properties that we own will not be immediately disposed of because of just additional conditions or market conditions, or they're being assembled for a larger project on that block.
I will say, some people are even interested in those who are, that are sandwiched in between other ones, and we just don't want to stall progress within the neighborhoods that are looking for it.
One of the biggest concerns is on that, that I would say, is, with, if you, the biggest thing we have to see is that that property could end up having much more damage. You could put $190,000 into renovating that property, and then have it be immediately damaged by the properties next door, which then, so there really is a kind of strategic, thoughtful component to the work in order to achieve efficient, long-term outcomes. Because we want to have outcomes that are successful for our neighborhoods for a long period of time. You know, we don't want them to see something that's renovated and then becomes vacant again, because the vacants are still in weird spaces next to them, and then we create a cycle.
No, I just want to say thank you for the thoughtfulness. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for the hard work you all have put in, and kind of look forward to moving the ball forward, so residents can start to see the progress in their neighborhoods that they deserve. So just look forward to being a part of the process. Thank you.
Colleagues, anyone else have questions, comments? Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with the, the slide covering all of the different areas that have either an impact investment area or other geographies of focus, et cetera, in it, covers most, most of the concentrations across the city. An area where it does not cover is the west side of downtown. I've been working with, had some, some great cooperation with your, your staff on both the code enforcement and the legal side, and, you know, really optimistic about the progress they've been making on the west side of downtown and whatnot. But it just seems odd to me that we're not including such an important neighborhood in, in these opportunities. And I'm curious as to what, kind of the, you know, I'm sure this was strategic, and I'm curious as to what that reasoning was.
I think, I mean, there's a number of different communities, but this is driven by data. So it's driven by the number of vacant properties, the number of vacant lots, the number of vacant residential properties versus, you know, vacant commercial, and the concentration of those. And so that is where there are some of those neighborhoods that, you know, have, are not part of this. That doesn't mean that we don't do work in those neighborhoods. You know, DHCD continues to do, do work citywide. We continue to look at opportunities for acquisition, or using the tools in our toolbox to tackle vacancy. And that might look differently in a neighborhood that is not in the vacant reduction priority geography.
So what's, what's lost by it not being in one of these categories?
The biggest thing that's lost is the state Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment Initiative funding, because the Baltimore vacant, the state's Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment Initiative, BVRI funding, is specific to the vacant reduction priority geographies.
Yeah. Okay. I just think, you know, like, some of these blocks are like one VBN, but it's the block, because it's not, these aren't row home blocks and whatnot, right? And there's, there's, there's a decent number of blocks in that, you know, and it's, it's the greater election and market area. It's, it's, it's more, it's a pretty important neighborhood. And so I've had, like I said, I feel like with the opportunity, like, with the work that the team is doing, have been, you know, appreciative of that. I mean, it certainly doesn't have the coordinated, top-level focus, even, even on the, like, logistics pieces, like, not including the money stuff, is, is what we see in, like, the West Impact Investment Area, which I've been really impressed with. I've been advocating to get more of that style of structure into the west side of downtown. I just want to highlight that is, you know, it's kind of, it's an important part of downtown rise and all that, that effort there. The, the one other thing I want to just flag again is, I think you and I have spoken, or texted, or emailed, like, nine times since March. I think the first time I had a conversation with someone about this was with Mr. Howard Tuttman back in December, about the, you have the great slides on the block-by-block strategies, block-level planning, property parcel mapping and whatnot. And just an example of, of why I think it's actually really important that we have that... that, talking back to, going back to the west impact investment area, you know, in Upton. We have, you know, Habitat for Humanity is interested in doing, you know, city blocks of city-owned vacant lots. They want to do single-family homeownership off new builds, right? And they, and they're really tolerant towards like market conditions. They can do that in areas that, you know, a lot of developers, like because they're, they, they're not pulling city or state funds, right? They're not, and they can be in blocks that aren't the, the least healthy, I guess you would say, and around other least healthy blocks. And, and so, I just, I don't understand why... I, I think if we had that clarified, right, then, then we could have these conversations more frankly about, okay, does this fit into this conversation or does it not? Because I, I really struggle to believe that, to use that specific example, like, that it's not better for the neighborhood that, that single-family homeownership, 60, 80% AMI, right, sweat equity, all these types of wonderful things in a block that isn't going to have that opportunity for several years anyway. I, I'm frustrated that we're not seeing more of that, and so, I just, I feel like having transparency in the planning process and an updated plan is, is a really important part of that conversation. I just kind of, I want to explain, like, that's a driving interest of mine in, in, in having that.
No, I, I agree, and we have met with Habitat, and they've been very specific about the areas that they're interested in, and then we work with them on those specific areas. So, I'd like to, I can circle back with you after the hearing to have a conversation more specifically about Habitat. And I will say that, you know, the team, you know, the, what we're talking about are the strategic implementation plans that were done for the impact investment areas and posted to DHCD's website. And those strategic implementation plans have been in the process of being updated. And sometimes, you know, this work is dynamic, it is ever-moving, ever-shifting, and there have been some, you know, different conversations that come in, but the team is actively working on updating and, and getting to the next iteration of, of those strategic implementation plans, which do have generalized information about generalized areas of where we want to see new infill construction, renovation, green space, et cetera. So, I agree with you on the importance of that, and I would love to follow up with you to have a little bit more of a conversation about the, specifically about the Habitat work.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. And it's, it's obviously not just them, but I, the conversation I had with them certainly gave me the impression that they would be interested if they had the opportunity in creating single-family homeownership opportunities for legacy residents in a neighborhood with a lot of vacant lots. It seems like, like a really good opportunity to pursue.
They, they are, and they're partnering with us in a number of, of neighborhoods, but, and that's why I want to have a little bit more, because Mike, you know, they have specific areas that they're interested in, and then sometimes we talk about a different area, and they're like, no. So, I just, I love them, they're great, they're a wonderful partner of ours, and want to see, to be able to support them the best that we can.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Go one, go on twice, three more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple more questions. The 707 on the, in the target line that's in the, for INREM, how, how are, how are we prioritizing to know what's going into the pipeline? And that might, that's for any of the acquisition pieces. How do we know?
That's the, the work on block level planning, whole block outcomes, you know, where we have development partners ready, where also now, we're taking consideration the BVRI funding to the community development organizations, which actually is going to be shifting some of that unexpectedly, kind of midway. So, that is why it's just a, it is a wonderful world of collaboration, communication, coordination, and understanding with all the parties on, on how to get those things in and move things through the pipeline.
I think that, you know, there's, there's over 4,000, I believe. There's, there's definitely close to 5,000 or more properties that are eligible for INREM. So, I think we want to try to get to, get to a, a number where at least we have some, I, I mean, I get that we want to prioritize where there's activities happening, where the BVRC is asking us to, to be involved. I know that the first cases were just based on like, hey, councilwoman, where do you want us to act? But, I mean, I think that that was obviously to, to get things moving. So, I guess we'll see as we go forward what those, what that looks like when we get the, the case numbers. But I wanted to just be like super clear that it's the block level planning, it's the BVRC pipeline, it's the whole blocks that we're working with. My understanding also, though, is that there was, you know, some of the community development organizations have made requests specifically to what they're, they're trying to do as well, not just the CDOs for BVRI. I'm just thinking, like...
Yeah, and we've been working with a number of our community partners on INREM since, since launch and, and since the first kind of form that we put up to kind of gauge and get interest in the, in the, in the work, even before they were an impact investment area, or even before they are a VP RG in terms of helping them move through. So, there's multiple different entities that we work with. But it is driven by kind of helping to achieve those whole block outcomes, you know, creating opportunity, if an opportunity presents itself that we need to take advantage of, we need to take advantage of that, and moving things through.
To my, my colleague's point about sort of those increased assessments, you know, the committee's going to be hearing the next iteration of INREM, which I affectionately call INREM II, to try to get to those cases that are, the assessments are rising and it's, it's harder for the liens to catch up. So, I'm looking forward to that bill. I did the algebra, and it looks like we, if we're going to stay with eight cases per attorney that is going to be filing, we need 25 attorneys. And so, if that's the goal, we should figure out how we, how we get those, whether it's through us, whether it's a partnership with our law firms, which we've talked about, and others. I think having that number is helpful for us to really look at a budget ask and that, that kind of thing as well. I wanted to ask also about lien release, and maybe, actually, you know what? This is going to be, that's going to be part of the disposition conversation, so we won't talk about that right this second, but I have some questions about it that I can ask offline as we prepare for that, for that next hearing. So, I think that the, the requests that we've made today are important for us to, you know, keep tabs on what's happening with INREM, and I appreciate everybody, you know, working very hard to make this happen, because I think we're a model for, you know, not just the state, but nationally in terms of how we're using this particular tool. So, and, and obviously, there's work to do. If we need 25 lawyers, let's figure out how we're going to get that, that capacity. Thank you.
I just have one question. Sorry. So, it has been a thought of mine since learning about the heart money scandal that's happening now in the city, in addition to the fact that I've seen an increase sales in terms of private equity firms. How are we managing our acquisition strategy, given that we're going to have a foreclosure crisis with the heart money properties, and then we have private equity firms interested because of the potential of benefiting from our TIF and everything else? So, how are we managing that now? Because, I'm going to be frank, we're broke. They have, they have a large number of sums of money that they can buy in bulk, so I just wonder how we're going to manage that.
So, there's a couple of different ways that we're looking at acquisition. It goes back to the same thing. We've done a full analysis of all of the 710 or 701 properties that are associated with the most recent group of entities related to the debt service coverage ratio loans. A lot of those are not vacant properties, they weren't vacant properties, the majority of them were occupied properties and are rented. We are looking at the ones that are vacant, part of that, that will start to get kind of hung up with some foreclosure cases, but we're working on what the, the strategy could be for tackling those acquisitions that are on the VBN side. And then, you know, on some of the private equity firms, that's one of the interesting ones to look at in terms of what money they have. You know, I've actually been seeing some things, which some of the private equity firms are starting to actually unload some of their properties. So, you know, that provides potential interest for some of our partners, maybe not necessarily us, but some of our partners in the city, and make sure that they're aware of those opportunities as well that are, you know, quality entities that could take over on those.
Thank you, colleagues. Any questions, comments? Perfecto. We are now recessing this hearing, and now we're going to do Resolution 2503, our informational hearing permits for the purpose of inviting representatives from Department of Housing and Community Development, the Office of the City Administrator, the Baltimore City Fire Department, the Office of the Fire Marshal, and other relevant parties to provide information on reform to the DCHD permit process. And I defer back to Commissioner Candy.
We have a presentation, and Director Williams, and actually, we have a presentation, it is being pulled up. Deputy CAO Kearney is going to provide some opening remarks, and then we're going to be going through the presentation with Director Williams.
Yep, thank you. So, good evening, Chairman Torrance and honorable members of the council. My name is Shamaya Kearney, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as a deputy city administrator for the city of Baltimore. I'm also leading the charge as head of the Permit Incident Command Structure, or what we call Permit ICS, which is a cross-agency initiative developed at the direction of the city administrator to place intentional focus on the city's permitting system. What you will hear from the team this evening are the efforts that have been made over the last several months to move us forward, and the next steps as we continue to look ahead. We've made strides in addressing permit processing challenges to include technological fixes and the rollout of auto-issue permits to more quickly process our simpler permit types. In addition, we have developed a publicly available dashboard, which will provide more insight and specificity into application volume and individual permitting-related tasks, and added clarity to our permitting data that is available in open Baltimore to ensure a more apples-to-apples comparison for anyone who's interested in that data. You'll also hear about our stabilization efforts to address application volume and return to pre-ACELA processing levels. While there is still more work to be done, I want to acknowledge the team for their hard work in getting us to this point. We know that there are still frustrations and that some have lost their faith in the city's permitting process. We acknowledge those realities and know that the focus of this hearing will be on the rollout of ACELA, which is just one component of our overall plan to streamline and create efficiencies in the permitting process. We will, we will continue our work as we move from stabilization to optimization. I'll now turn it over to Director Williams to walk us through the slide presentation. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, and Vice Chair, members of the committee. Justin Williams, I am the Director of Permitting and Development Services, also the Permit Czar. Just wanted to start and, I guess, probably echo the sentiments of the deputy city administrator, acknowledging what we mentioned at the last hearing, is that our transition to the new permit system has been more challenging than any of us wanted. Every delay, we recognize, represents real costs and real frustration for Baltimore residents who are trying to improve their homes and businesses trying to grow. I've heard from many of you, all members specifically, and the new constituents, about these challenges, and we take them very seriously. Today, I'm here to walk through the slides and report happily that after months of intensive, near-daily efforts by this multi-agency team of people here in the front and people in the background with us in the gallery, we've turned a corner. So, I'll highlight three concrete achievements at the outset, that our auto issuance functionality went live this week, so meaning that roughly 20% of our residential permits will now be issued automatically within 24 hours of submission. Two, we've launched a comprehensive public dashboard that will provide real-time transparency in the permit volumes, processing times, and workflow status. And three, that we've stabilized our permit issuance levels to near exceeding the pre-ACELA levels of permit issuance. Just briefly, this slide here shows the roadmap, kind of the bigger picture of where things are. We tried to organize this work into three distinct phases. Phase one addresses the acute transition issues, getting people into the system, fixing technical bugs, and stabilizing basic operations. Phase two is where I see, where we see ourselves at now, focusing on the key process improvements, like the auto issuance of permits, cleaning up abandoned permits, which we'll talk about a little bit later, looking at our review staffing levels and some technical issues with staffing, or sorry, initial customer notifications. And then, phase three is sort of the, that's why there'd be more fast icons in the corner, is like the phase three is really where I'm looking forward to getting to finally, is really to shift our focus to the broader customer experience and efficiency gains for the system. So, to reiterate, on top of the three big accomplishments listed at the outset, just reiterating the top bullet point there is our data dashboard. I'm sure in the link, if we, I'm sure we emailed you the memo, the link to our dashboard can be found on Housing's website on the permits page, but that shows the application intake and workflow. We have some screenshots we'll go through a little bit later. But it's not just a reporting tool, which is helpful for you in your roles during oversight for us, but also will help us drive some more data-driven decision-making as we reform some of the permits operations. Looking forward to seeing where permits are getting stuck more, with more precision and deploying resources accordingly. As I mentioned, the auto issuance capacity capability will remove, I think we said 20% of the permits that are residential. Look, doing the math, that was 150 permits per week from manual processing, so will allow staff to do more on the complex permits. The first data update, since the auto issuance went live, we had 83 residential permits total, 30 of those were auto-issued. So, that's 30-something percent. So, that's a higher rate than expected, but if that holds, then we might even have more productivity gains from this auto issuance intervention. I think, the other thing, the other thing to flag on this slide here was just, yeah, we've also added the call center lines for additional kind of adjacent efforts in the permit processing. So, the trades licensing team, these are people who process the licensed contractors. So, if you're doing work in the city and you might be a licensed contractor, you still have to register your, your license with the city so we know that you have a license. So, that team has a call center line, too, and then also the building inspections line is now part of the call center, so we can help handle issues that come up. And I've gotten calls from, I think, a lot of you members, when there's been an issue with inspection, that got canceled last minute because of, maybe the inspector was sick and people are upset. So, having better capacity to answer phone calls, especially early in the morning when there's like a higher volume of calls, will, I think, help the customer service experience. Go to the next slide. So, this is our longer wait dashboard. So, this is obviously a static screenshot, but the interactive version is live right now. I'll just flag for the council's attention here, some of these metrics show real progress. So, this, there's like two big buckets on our dashboard, so one shows permits issued, another one shows permits in process, I'll be in the next slide. But for this slide, just draw your attention to the permits issued of the month of September, that was 2602. So, that shows we're just 91 off from this period last year. So, it's kind of shows that we're getting to that level of pre-ACELA permit issuance. And I'm hoping to get more granular on these permit types going forward, so not just a one- and two-family combo permit, that's a residential permit, but like a permit for a deck, so people can make more informed decisions and be confident that if they're doing the kind of work, they know how long it's going to take to get a permit. I was just looking at the email from a prominent home builder who said they got his building permit for, for new, sick of townhomes in five weeks, which is the fastest it's ever gotten permits done. And so, that's exciting, and so that'll help, I'm hoping we can be more granular to show that if it's a five-week turnaround for any new construction for a townhome, that will help with the home builders know, hey, it's five weeks to get a building permit in Baltimore for a new construction townhome, that'll help in, in form investment decisions. And... And I'll just also flag, although it's not always apples-to-apples, but looking at other peer cities' dashboards, like we are already where other cities are. It might not be apples-to-apples, they may have a different methodology, but looking at Seattle, I was looking at Fairfax just a minute ago, and we're already faster in the median days to issue these permits. So, I'm excited to see where we can go from there. Next slide. So, this just shows the other side of it. So, this last slide showed the permits that were issued. These show the applications in progress. You'll see, so the upper-left-hand corner in the main portion shows that there are 8,670 permits in progress or processed right now. It's critical to understand that 60% are waiting applicant input, so they're not stuck in the city side. We're waiting for the applicant to provide more information. The median age of eight to six days also includes the entire lifecycle, not just city side. I definitely recognize, and I think we all recognize that, a lot of the issues when it's in the applicant side are things that we could avoid with being better in asking the questions in a clearer way or having better information to applicants so that we, that they know what we need from them. So, that's definitely a thing we want to get to as part of the phase two and the phase three upgrades. So, these next four charts here, we can go through relatively quickly, but these show the story clearly about where we have come from to stabilize things. That sharp dip, that dotted line here, shows the dip in productivity when ACELA launched that we've been climbing our way out of basically ever since early February. Go to the next slide. So, that shows permits issued. This shows the net permits processed per week. So, this is the processed, which could mean either we've issued the permit, we closed it out because of an activity, or we've basically processed it, waiting for the applicant to pay to get the permit issued. There was a drop, you'll see, right before October. We did our first purge of permits that were, I guess, abandoned under the building code after six months of that activity. We had traditionally closed out, or HCD has closed out permits. We paused that activity during the ACELA launch, and so we did our first batch of the closures early October. So, there's a bigger drop there. But I think, and I'm predicting that once we get to stabilization and we do a rolling closure of permits that are abandoned, then we will show better metrics that we're close to or even below zero with our net permit applications being processed. Go to the next slide. One more way to show the data. Basically, that chart on the left shows in and out per week. I'll draw your attention to the table at the upper-right-hand corner. So, early from February to July, the net addition to workload was 200 permits per week added to our workflow, and we've brought that down in the past few months, from August to October to '47. Again, just showing that we are getting closer to matching the in versus out in our permit and the workload for the staff. One more, I think, chart to show just where we are in stabilization. Shows us bending the curve, to borrow the pandemic phrase, that we have started to steer, we think, where permits are coming, the net process, net applications in process queue has climbed and we're sort of reached a plateau. The gray line, I'm told by the data folks here, is based on a projection of if we count applications that are going to be voided because of an activity and plus auto issuance of 20% of the residential permits, we'll start to see that decline so that there'd be, the net applications in queue will be going down to a reasonable level. Next slide. Okay, so then, just to give, this slide is intended to give you a picture of the work that goes into the different permit reviews and to help demonstrate sort of where the interventions are kind of needed and sort of all over the place. The 16% showing the far-left column is the items that can be auto-issued. So, this 16% is the number of overall permits. You recall, I said at the beginning, that 20% of the residential permits, we estimate would be auto-issue eligible, but 16% of the overall number of permits will, we think, be auto-issued, so that can be issued without any manual review. Goes straight from intake to the fee request stage, and the permit will be issued once a fee is paid, and that will lead to freeing up staff time and capacity to work on other permits. In the further-right columns, that needs some review. This might be because they're in a CHAP district, well, that's not a good example, or they might be a district that might need extra retention, but not a technical review of plans. So, like, yeah, floodplain would be another one where we'd track information about how much is being spent on a property because that triggers certain floodplain requirements down the road. So, that's 54% of the permits. And then the last column there is the 30% that need more intensive review. So, that could be the full-blown, it could be everything electrical, architectural, structural, mechanical, DOT, fire review happens there. And that's, the lower boxes in the right-hand corner show those extra reviews that happen. I also flagged, but that shows in this slide too, that the, to help address the workload, and this might be in the legitimate backlog for trade reviews, was that the KCI reviewers you brought in, so you can go to the next slide, is that we brought in the equivalent of eight full-time staff from KCI to do additional, handle the capacity for technical reviews. They've, it's been a sore process, and I would have liked to get them onboard and started, so we don't have good numbers on their productivity, but I've seen anecdotally that we've gotten things out a lot more quickly, especially we can jump on some things. So, that mentioned before, I think Commissioner Kennedy mentioned, the last hearing, we've only had one electrical reviewer for the first part of the year until now doing electrical reviews. And so, the handling of search capacity, the emergencies to come up, like, hey, I just need one quick review of this one thing, electrical, but that person was doing other things. And so, having extra capacity already has been a big breakthrough for me when I've had some people come to me with like a fire drill with a permit to get issued right away. And I think, coming down the home pike on these slides, showing again the next steps beyond ACELA. It's still my intention to get the B More Fast Advisory Group up and running. It's unfortunate that the ACELA ICS permit work has sort of delayed the advisory group coming together, but I've certainly been meeting with members of industry. I appreciate those of you who've sent people to me because I'm happy to talk to them and hear their concerns and to try to show that, you know, we hear where they're coming from. But looking forward to having the group come together to help give advice on what we should be prioritizing next, on the next steps. The bullet points below are where I'm thinking as of now, things we want to focus on in the nearer term. These include the emergent technologies. I'm really excited about the AI plan review. Even in the past few months, just the capacity and ability of AI agents has been exciting. I've been playing with AI agents myself and trying to stream on things to the zoning board wearing my BMZA hat, and I've been excited to see the things we can do on the permit side as we implement those technologies. One more piece, our in-house OPI team has developed a tool with Microsoft Teams to notify permit techs when a permit has a new document received. That's just with in-house capacity, not even using AI agents. So, there's a lot of tools I think we can start to utilize in the next few months as AI takes over the world and the city. Also, things I'm working on, I've already done it for the public engagement access piece as a public land use and licensing portal, so I've, in the BMZA capacity, have already made the documents filed online, available publicly. My vision and goal is to get that going for all the public-facing land use hearing agencies, so the Planning Commission, CHAP, Liquor Board, that's one other one. But all those agencies in one place, because I know your constituents get concerned when they don't know what's happening in their community, because there's five different websites to check for a permit, or sorry, for a hearing. So, having one site to show where what's happening will make it easier for them to know what's happening in their communities. We've also, as we've discussed before, we've had third-party review launched already for the fire department reviews. Looking forward to expanding that across the board for other trade reviews. There's been a push for many to do self-certification, so that's like if a licensed architect has enough experience, they can certify that their plans meet the code, and that'd be that. So, we're looking into options for expanding that or implementing that here in the city that would need some more guardrails to make sure it's done safely. Also, in the last section, the developer and builder support. So, really would like to get to the developers' agreement process. That's one of those things where I'm sure those of you know, like David Fram sort of is a keeper of that, and he's a great worker, but it's all in his head, so I'm worried one day he will be retiring. So, I want to make sure we get the process clarified before he does that, or he wins the lottery and leaves us. The minor variance process, and this would be in the BMZA's realm of administrative docket, so opening the ability up, that's already in the code, that you already authorized in the code, we haven't implemented yet, to allow applicants to have a process for smaller hearings that could be approved administratively if there's no objection from the community associations or neighboring property owners. And then also, aligned with the vacant work, we were discussing the pre-approved plan, document templates. This is something Commissioner Kennedy and I have talked about. I think I've seen this in LA with University of California, LA campus doing this work where we had, like if you're going to have a 16-foot row home, there's only so many ways you can configure that row home, so we have pre-approved plans to say, hey, if you use these plans off the shelf, you'll be ready to go because it's already approved by our staff, and these are what we want to see, even with minor changes. So, that will streamline the process. So, I think that's it. I think just in closing, just noting again, I've been excited to be a part of this process as the Permit Czar. It's been exciting to be a part and learn the minutia of all the permit review processes that I wouldn't have done otherwise if I were still in my deputy mayor role. I'm excited to be in this role now as the Director of Permitting and Development Services to help lead the enterprise. It's not just a DHCD permit process, which is, I guess, what was referenced in the city council's agenda. It's like a city-wide process with all the agencies here that are here behind me today. So, looking forward to working with them. It's not mission accomplished, we recognize that, but we're declaring that the foundation is getting solid, and now we'll be able to build strategically rather than just put out fires. So, happy to answer your questions and continue working with each of you to ensure this system serves Baltimore's residents and businesses effectively.
Thank you. So, good work. I'm not going to lie, good work. I'm pretty hard on people, but it's different. I will say that I've had some people who've had good experiences with it, and I still have a lady I told just build a fence because there's no point going through the permit system because she was still on hold because of a pen, right? So, I want to go back to how we got here. While I acknowledge the successes, I'm still hung on the discovery process to actually get here, and then also how staff provided the last report. So, I spoke with two software engineers who confirmed that JIRA has a capability to automatically generate records and reports, given that, can the agency explain the extraction of notes from JIRA platform used by ACELA team and will require significant staff time? Because I went down a rabbit hole on YouTube with JIRA, and I received a summary table, and then I finally got the tickets sent to me from BSIT. So, I'm just wondering, between the conversation I had in terms of the requests, then my follow-up conversation with our Deputy City Administrator, how did it so happily happen that I got the notes that fast? If it was already put in writing to this council, that it would be a burden on staff to produce?
Mr. Chair, Leila Layman, interim CIO for the city, director, interim director for BSIT. Thank you for giving, getting the opportunity to clarify this because I think it was a bit of a misunderstanding. So, when we reviewed the request, completely agree, exporting is simple, but the challenge was that didn't seem responsive and seemed more superficial because there's two factors around that. One was in the export, it doesn't provide any of the attachments, and so, we didn't see that that would be, we were concerned that that wouldn't be viewed as meaningful to provide just a straight export. The other thing that I noted when we did send it was that, as we went through and we were correcting things, the actual JIRA tickets weren't always up to date, right? So, things stayed open in that export that weren't necessarily still open. And so, again, we, our interpretation was for it to be meaningful, we would need to go back and clean those up, and so, those were the two things of why we said it would be administratively burdensome. And we didn't want to take, divert staff time away from system improvements to do those two things.
I hear you, but that was not clearly articulated, and I thought I was very specific what I wanted, and that was the raw data. But also, I could have, you could have produced the tickets. So, I'm just, and I'm just, I'm just doing a Ronald Reagan. I trust by verify, and I felt that it was not responsive to my request. It was bordering on either an untruth or purloisiness at that point. I'm just being transparent with you.
And our intention was not to mislead. Again, we wanted to be responsive, and so, did not feel, felt that that limited detail wouldn't be so. So, understood for next time to maybe follow up, to inquire, so that we can get that clarity upfront.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My next question is directly towards Commissioner Hessler. I was informed by the employee at your agency during the discovery phase that only select individuals were brought in as inspectors to discuss the operation of the system. Can you clarify why broader participation wasn't sought at the initial stage and would provide records to identify the names, positions, and dates of all individuals who participated in the discovery phase of discussions?
We can work to get all that information to you as best we can. We talked with, with staff about the system. We're very familiar with the process. We have permit techs that worked with us in developing the process and testing it, and are still working with us, so I'm not sure.
So, will you provide the names, position, dates, and times of the discussions? And the nature of said discussions with staff?
As best I can, based on the records available.
Okay. So, is the law department here? So, I want, to be specific, DC Kerry, I want the actual calendar invites, the names of the staff persons, in addition to that, any notes produced by staff at that time that are not technically deliberative. But I just want to make sure because what I'm hearing from this whistleblower was that our staff was not initially meaningfully engaged to produce this system, which means, and I'm just going to be frank, similar to everything that we've done with Workday, junk in, junk out.
Okay. You said the names, the calendar invites, and what other? There was something else that you mentioned.
The positions, the dates of all individuals who participated in the discovery phase, and whatever notes were produced from said meetings.
Okay. I have that information and will share that, we'll talk internally about it. I also just want to use the term whistleblower.
I'm very clear, and I'm going to keep that person's name quiet.
I mean, that's fair for you to keep the name, but whistleblower implies waste, fraud, and abuse, which is usually determined, which we use the term whistleblower. And so, that implies that there was something that was done wrong. And so, I just want to be careful about the term of that, and I understand that that's the term that you intended to use, but for the benefit of the public, I would just like to clarify that not, nothing was done wrong, and that it's fair to ask for clarity on information and who was involved, that's fine, but whistleblower is just a very strong term.
I'll stick with that term at this moment, given the information that I know. Also, for BSIT, can you also provide what role BSIT played during the discovery phase and what level of oversight or quality control there that you exercised throughout the system design and implementation process?
Mr. Chair, is that for a follow-up to provide that in writing detail?
Now, in writing, please.
Okay. So, we talked about this a little in July, right? So, we are the IT for DHCD and worked with them to identify them as well as the various agencies that participate in the system to identify the criteria that would be needed to meet. You know, in those initial phases, worked to put together that criteria matrix, identified the top vendors in this space, to which then worked with DHCD to schedule and vet those potential systems, review them for meeting those criteria. We provide the post-implementation, we provide the project management for the, for the project. We do the data integrations, the data transitions, right? Change management, those are the typical functions that we provide during that process.
And can you provide the names and positions of the staff that participated in that discovery phase as well? I just want to compare those between the two agencies.
Yes, we'll provide that as a follow-up. Yes, we'll provide that as a follow-up.
I'll defer to Vice Chair now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question about, there's still sometimes in the emails that we send to get help for our residents, which is still happening, that there are technical issues that are to blame for why somebody hasn't been able to pay or some stamp didn't get stamped or something like that. Like it's a, and to quote one email, "A frustrating technical issue." So when that occurs, is it BSIT that fixes that issue? Is it Acela that fixes that issue? Is it Justin that fixes that issue? I'm sure he's like, no, that's not me. But I want to know, who is it that I can then send this email to that says that this is a technical issue with Acela that's still happening? Because that is a programming problem, that is a, you know, some of those bugs should have, would have been worked out if that there was proper testing.
So I'll start and then anybody can fill in. But I think that, you know, some of the issues that you just mentioned, like something being stamped, that is actually not an Acela issue. It has nothing to do with the system. It is a technical issue in terms of not actually technology stamping, stamping that piece. There are two different components here. We have Acela, and then we also have project docs that, you know, communicate, sometimes not as well, but that is the standard, you know, project docs is the standard across you know, majority cities for plans review and plans working. In terms of payment, you know, link not working, that would be a technical issue that we'd want to inquire more about because Paymentis is the city's payment services provider. And if they legit, legitimately are having a problem, you know, with the pay button not working, then we need to kind of see what that is. So I would say that it really is dependent upon what the specific issue is, who will end up actually taking care of that, reviewing it, seeing if it is a one-off situation, if it's something broader that needs bigger attention from the team, and is it a bottleneck in other areas? Or is there a technical, you know, component within either Acela or project docs or Paymentis or any of those things that are tied to issuing the permit?
Okay, I understand that, but there's, and I get the, I understand the reason for your answer that is basically it depends on what it is. But I think that what I'm trying to get at is, you know, when there are these frustrate, not, I'm not talking about the user. I'm talking about, because that's a different conversation that I'll have in a second. I'm talking about internally, quote, "No matter how many times batch stamp is selected, it will not move forward until the evolve error has been resolved." That sounds like a frustrating thing that this particular staff person has been working on for a really long time and can't finally get resolved. So how, this, that's all internal, it is not the user, it is not me, it is not a permit puller, it is internal. How, like is BSIT responsible for that? Is it Acela is responsible for that?
The same, I think the beginning process is still the same in terms of evaluating, is that a one-off situation? And then it goes into further examination as to what the issue would be. So I'm going to now turn it over on this side for...
So you would hand that to us to look at, right? And a couple of things, as Commissioner Kennedy said, it may not actually always be a technical issue, right? Because sometimes it's people weren't following people on, often like when we were reviewing the applications, didn't necessarily follow the process, did some things manually, and it caused some other things to happen. So that resulted in something that could appear like a system issue but was not, right? So we would investigate, is it that type of thing? Is it something on the Pdoc side, right? Which would be AVAL and would not necessarily be Acela. Is it Acela? Depending on the issue that would arise, what our project manager would ascertain is, can we fix that in-house? Because we can fix some of those things in-house. We can't fix everything, it depends on what the issue is. And then she would escalate that to Acela if we need to, right? Or AVAL if it's on the Pdoc side. As an aside, we are working, and I know we provided this update, continuing to work to improve the integrations between Excel and Pdocs.
Okay. So you did answer my question in terms of like, you try to kind of fix it internally first, and then you would go to the, to the producer of the technology if that's not the case. But if you're not the producer of the technology, BSIT still has the expertise to try to get that. I mean, I want to relieve the person here who's trying to figure out this problem.
Yeah. You can send it to me, right? I will get it to our project manager and we can disposition that. If we can't fix it, then we work with the vendor to resolve.
Yep, thank you. My next...
If I may add on that, on to that, because I think I'm on the email string that generated that comment. And that one is an example where staff or the management staff was aware of the issue and that it's already been reported to AVAL, which does the project docs communication. But I think the issue that I've observed, and it's part of the reason I think my role has been created, is to help information share across the enterprise internally and externally, so that there's, when things are known, it's like, so everyone knows and then we're all on the same page. So I've created already, having launched, yeah, like a Teams page for everybody who does permits, so it's one place to have information shared. Because we're all different agencies and all different buildings even, getting information across is not always easy. So that's where I view my job to do that work. And then with the training officer that housing's interviewing for now, I imagine that'll be his or her job also to help have regular routine training across the enterprise for things like this sort of thing, where it's like, hey, it's a technical issue, but you're aware of it, check here, and then frequently asked questions of how to resolve this issue to have better lines of communication.
Okay. It sounds like you've got, you're working on a plan to make some of that happen. My second question is about this topic that I bring up a lot. I'm, I'm very, I think it's great to have auto-issue permits. I'm grateful to have had the chance to be one of the testers. My biggest concern is that some of our players who are not playing fairly and trying to rehab properties quickly are going to go ahead and file for an auto-issue permit, and then they're going to do a gut rehab. We know that it has happened, I have tracked it in several properties, we know that it's happening. And, and it is one of the reasons why we end up with this issue of people purchasing properties with VBNs, even though it looks like it might have a permit, it wasn't, it was way beyond the scope of the permit. So what my suggestion was, and I'm going to ask for a request for this, is to, is to make sure that there's some way that, whether it's Acela or what, project docs, whatever it is, monitors that, because what happens now is that the developer is supposed to call in and say, okay, I'm ready for the inspection. They're not going to do that if they're about to do a gut rehab and violate the law. So I want to make sure that we're being proactive by having the system maybe talk to one of the inspectors and say, hey, this person hasn't reported back in 30 days, maybe we should go and check and see what's happening. So that at least there can be an inspector out there trying to see whether the work's being done beyond permit before we get a 311 request from a resident saying, hey, are they supposed to be doing full-on demo? Or that we get an opportunity to, or somebody, you know, buys a property with a BBN on it inadvertently? So how, what, can I get a plan for how we are going to institute and integrate that idea of being a little bit more proactive, particularly on the auto-issue, auto-issue permits? And can I have that in a month?
Can I add a quick clarification?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Jane Lewis, Assistant Deputy Mayor for Community and Economic Development. The auto-issue permits, to clarify, are not something that a user is going to select. They're not going to say, I'm filing an auto-issue permit. Rather, it's the case that applicants fill in a bunch of information at the intake stage, and some of those permit applications, based on what's input, will be automatically processed by the system. But it doesn't, the introduction of auto-issue does not change the calculus of the problem you're introducing. If I'm an applicant and I want to say, I am filing an application to install one electrical outlet, and in fact, what I'm going to do is a gut renovation, that would be deception and fraud regardless of whether we're auto-issued or not. If they give us information saying, I'm doing this tiny amount of work, and they do something way beyond the scope, auto-issue doesn't change the concern I think that you raised. So I just wanted to clarify that. It's not something that people choose. It's just a way to make the work of our permit texts more efficient.
I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarity. But as you said, the, the problem still remains, that even if somebody says, because we, this isn't new to this system, this has happened. It is def, and I'll be clear about that, this is not new to the system. It has happened before, it was one of the problems we flagged way before the, when we asked for some reforms to the system. So this isn't a new question. So did you want to respond to that?
I'll go first. I know Deputy Commissioner Hessler had some numbers pulled together. My reaction is, as I guess the...
I think we should do this as a follow-up for our code enforcement piece because that's more related to code enforcement. Because if someone's doing work without a permit or out of the scope...
No, this is related to this because I want the system to talk to the inspector first.
Yes, my initial reaction is, and he has numbers or both back of the envelope, but he's pulled, my concern is, without hiring more inspectors to do this work, we're taking away from inspectors doing the work that's already kind of at capacity to do...
How many inspectors do you need? So I need a plan.
He has the math, so I'll let him give the math. My overall global reaction is that my request is to let us get things stabilized with the building permit system and then take on the, if we, if we are inclined to go that way, just to let us get to the promise line before we start adding more complications or extra workload on to the staff that's already...
So there's a couple of different things that we're looking at in terms of addressing this issue, which we know is a concern. And, you know, there is, one, we're looking at having some staff right now do some follow-up phone calls that aren't email-related to some of those permits that are kind of stagnant in, in, in the process. After six months, if there's no movement, that permit actually ends up getting closed and moved out. We have been doing evaluation of what potentially staff would need to look like, you know, in terms of number of inspectors, number of office support, because it's not just an inspector, it's the inspectors, it's the office support specialists, it's vehicles, Acela licenses, it's, it's multiple different components of what that would take. And part of what Director Williams was discussing is having the best understanding of the world of permits that we're actually talking about for them to go and inspect. Because there are a number of permits that actually, you know, they haven't called for a reason because actually no work has happened and the job is actually, they bought the permit, they paid for the permit, the job is done because they never did the work and they're not going to do the work. The other piece that we have to figure out, you know, we can send an inspector out to say, go look at this address. They go out to that address, no one is home and no one is there, so they've just gone to an address and can't get inside of the property to actually see. So then we're not being efficient in, in the time of the inspectors that we're trying to say to go and look at a world of 1,600 or 1,700, you know, inspectors. So we are evaluating what that staff, you know, potential capacity would need to be across all of the different components to do this because it isn't just the inspector. It's, if we're going to try to get there, then we need to be making phone calls and trying to track down a homeowner and is the work happening? So we're also starting first with some immediate phone calls to kind of also gauge the world like, you applied for the permit, you received the permit, you haven't gotten your inspection, is this job still happening? Is it still working? And, and then being able to do that. But it is part of the entire kind of landscape that we're still gathering information on.
I have a follow-up. Is that part of the role that you guys have been using your community aides for in the agency?
To make the phone calls?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's actually what we just, I just mentioned, one of our community aides that I think would be great to help just dial the phone and ask questions with a script and, you know, a tracking sheet. So we've, we've discussed that and are actively looking at what it needs to be and kind of starting with a, a section of properties that we can pull from the data that we feel, you know, is a, is a good subsection of data to start having someone work on and not sending people down a rabbit hole as well.
Have we looked at the assistance of an autodialer? So if the data is fed into, if the data is fed into a system with the numbers, the person's name and their information, and a person can make four calls at one time and there's a prerecorded message that goes to people who don't pick up and that person is just only talking to people, I'm just trying to help you problem solve because the autodialer can help you call hundreds of people in one day rather than 30 people a day, and it won't take additional people. But if we have a prerecorded message that can be pre-approved, that gives the person an actual location to call, I think that would be helpful with staff capacity.
No, I think that's a great, and we'll look into autodialer and how that would work into a process. My big concern too is getting someone to actually call back on that, like if, so, but we'll evaluate and see.
Well, I mean, I think, I think these are super helpful, I think, but you understand where I'm coming from. So even if there's like a variation of what I was asking, you know, that would be helpful to know. And, because I do think that just, I mean, I think a phone call would be fine, but also I do think that that follow-up is going to be important. I can, I know you all know of one particular address that I'm concerned about where this has happened and where, where, and it was a, you know, pretty ridiculously obvious problem. And, you know, the neighbors called 311 and called me, and then we were able to get a stop work order, but then, you know, the amount of, sure, we get more money from stop work orders, but, you know, what if we hadn't caught that? What if that would have been a problem for somebody moving into that property? And so I, I do think in some way we've got to figure this out because if they're not going to call back, then we've got to go out there and see what's happening.
And we have to figure out how and what the best way to go out there is. Because if we go, we could go out to a property 10 times and if no one is home and work isn't happening. So it is looking at what is, I don't want to say the best way, but what is a process and a workflow that could happen to address the issue that I think we, we both share that concern, many of us around the table share the concern of unpermitted work happening across the city. You know, we don't want there to be unpermitted work. We want people to act in good faith, but we know that people do not act in good faith. And we want to try our best to find those persons that are not acting in good faith. And I think it is going to take us just a little bit longer to figure out what that workflow, what that process would be to, you know, best try to find and tackle, not physically tackle, but tackle the bad actor, do we, bad faith.
Yeah, no, I, I, this conversation has actually gone a lot further than it ever has, so I'm happy about that. And so hopefully by the next time we have this hearing, that we might have at least a preliminary plan for how this is going. Does that make sense, another quarter? It doesn't have to be implemented, it just needs to be a plan.
So, so just in fairness to this team, we, we are trying to stabilize Acela. We are responding to every email, phone call, text message that we get from council, anybody else about individual challenges. We are trying to implement me more fast. Like there is a lot of moving pieces right now. And so I think, you know, when you hear hesitancy from me about timelines, it's because I don't want to come back in a quarter and tell you that we haven't done it because we're still triaging other things. And so we hear you on the request. I think we will do our, our due diligence and keep in contact with you over the next couple of months in between hearings to let you know how that's progressing. But we are very focused on getting the system stabilized, and we're not there yet. We still have some work to do. You know, you cited the email that you received where someone is frustrated, and that's internally, right? So we, we still have some work to do, and I really want to focus us on the system. We spent a lot of time, money, and energy to make this system work. We need it to be optimized, not just stabilized. And so we want to move to optimization before we, you know, address some of the other challenges that we have. And so I'm just asking for a little bit of grace, you know, while we do some of that work, before we start to take on additional tasks. And I do understand the concerns.
I appreciate that, I just hope that... Sorry, thank you. I appreciate that. I hope that as you're moving in that direction, that you're just keeping this in, in your mind as a way to, as we, as we move forward. So I'm, this has gone way better than I thought it would, so that's good.
Can I, can I go on my pitch? On this, as I've said before, and I know you've thought about this a lot more deeply than I have, is that, I think the examples you're studying with the home buyer who buys unwittingly from someone who did work without a permit, that seems to me to be clearly a fraud. And so like the state's attorney's office, I talked to Ivan Bates actually about this issue at the Ravens game a few weeks ago, and he's like, oh, interesting. So like, that's where I feel like the AG or state's attorney's office could also be brought in as a partner to do the enforcement, because that's the ultimate hammer of criminal investigation.
Well, we, if you'll remember, my first bill that I ever passed was disclosure Well, we, if you'll remember, my first bill that I ever passed was disclosure that the seller had to disclose. And we know that that was not being utilized during the pandemic in particular. Realtors are much better about it now. There's people that are actually aware. We've done a campaign, we're going to continue that campaign for people to just check code map. It's super easy. Just Google code map, see if there's a red square on the property and, you know, be done with it. But I do have a constituent that is taking the seller to court. And so, you know, that will sort of make its way through and see how that kind of precedent would be, would be done.
I recognize it's a civil, I mean, the civil case is very hard for a layperson to do it. But that's where the state attorney's office could bring the hammer as a criminal matter and make it less burdensome.
I just want to be in the interest of time, because I did promise 7:30 to everybody at the beginning that we move on. Because I want to be respectful and I want to acknowledge that we've seen significant progress by you guys. And I don't want to keep you here all night on a Tuesday. So I just want to make sure if we can get to any additional questions from our colleagues. And then I'll end with some closing comments.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Try to be brief. One, I just want to note, I distinctly remember in the July hearing, coming, getting, coming away with the impression that we were, the permits cleared versus permits issued, having the impression that we had already turned that corner then. And so I'm, and I've mentioned that several times in sort of a optimistic sense to folks. So I'm concerned that like we're now looking at, hey, hopefully we are getting close to that. Because I thought, I thought we did that a couple of months ago. And I recognize that might have been like one week or whatever, like coincidentally before hearing. But, you know, I'm, I'm worried that we're as close to, yeah, I was, I was disappointed to see that we actually, the permits backlog is still growing, because I thought that we had turned the corner on that three months ago.
Please.
If I speak to the one, I think, I mean, if I remember correctly, what was mentioned in the last hearing was the application intake stage. This is the first P, the front door for permits. At that point, we had gotten the intake stuff done. So like we got it in, because for the first few months, the issue was simple permit, complex permit was all stuck in the same queue, not getting through to be processed. So at the time, three months ago, two months, three months ago, we had turned the corner on just getting the intake stuff done so that the intake queue was reduced. But we still hadn't tackled the processed out the door side. So that's where we are now. I know it's sort of semantic, but I think the distinction was important because it's like, we tackled the front door issue. That was like, that's where we were at the time, was like just getting the front door stuff done and getting it in. But now we've gotten to the point where we've streamlined the processes to get things moving out.
Yeah, clearly the misunderstanding is mine. The, concern still there. The, according to the presentation provided today, looks like use and occupancy permits are taking about three months to issue. Do we have a goal timeline for, for when that's hitting on all cylinders?
So I think the use and, I'll start on that one and then turn it over. I think the use and occupancy permit one is a, is an interesting one because you apply for the use and occupancy permit, and then it moves to inspection phase. And then it is solely on the applicant to schedule those inspections. And then once those inspections occur, then the permit is issued. So are, you know, there's a, a key piece of that that is really heavily dependent on the applicant. And there are persons that actually, when they're doing a project, they apply for their building permit and their use and occupancy permit at the same time. And so then that use and occupancy permit is sitting there in inspection phase maybe for six months or five, not six, maybe five months while they're doing their building permit. And then they go in to get their inspections and their final for the use and occupancy permit. So I don't know that we have a optimal way to answer your question.
So there's, there's a lot of variation based off of the applicant's, like, effort and whatnot there? Is there a better number for that? Like, is there a better metric to look at for that timeline then? Like, like how do we know that, how do we know that the use and occupancy process on the city side is working or not working? Because it sounds like that that's not a super helpful metric to have.
Yeah, it, it would, we would look at the application to inspection phase. That would be the piece, from the moment application is made and then to when it moves to inspection phase, that time period.
Okay. I guess for the next quarterly one, that would be a, a good to, good to delineate there. And then lastly-
Just to clarify, you're asking for the next hearing that we examine the timeline between the inspection phase to close.
The application to inspection phase for use and occupancy permits.
Yeah, the front of that, yeah. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Chair.
Perfect.
And then lastly, just to use, use like a case study example of something that we have going on now, right? We have a minority owned, woman owned sandwich shop that's currently operating in Lexington Market, is looking to open a second location in Cross Street Market. They have a state grant of $47,000 that they, they need to have it. You know, the, the intent from the state grant is to have that, them open by December. The, the scope is actually really limited, right? Like it's, it's a sandwich shop stall. They are trying to open up a sandwich shop in a stall in a food, basically, market, right? And the scope, new food service equipment, no hood required, new floor drain needed, some new finishes, new accent lighting only, general lighting and ceiling remain, new tenant sign and TV screens mounted, new front counter, rear low wall and shelving, and new shelving for back stock above three existing three compartment sink. How, how much, and I, and I, I know when-
So Councilman, that's very deep into the weeds for this oversight hearing. I would rather you take that offline so that we can-
To, to end, to end that question, Mr. Chair, I'll just say, how, how fast should that process take?
I'd like to respond on the questions about timelines, which keep coming up. Because I think really the only meaningful way to look at turnaround times for permits is going to be when we dig deeper into the different phases. If you remember at our last hearing, and in one of the charts we showed you here, the permits can vary so much. You just listed off a lot of very specific things that exist for this permit that might not exist for another one. It might be more complicated to open up a restaurant in a food hall and navigate between the restaurant operator's responsibility and the facility operator's responsibility. There's many reasons it becomes complicated. The only way to drill down into accountability for how long something should take is not the overall permit turnaround time, but these different workflow phases where things are sitting on a city staff person's desk. And how long should it take to get that out? And we definitely now, after a wonderful effort, I think, from our OPI and our tech folks, have built up a data architecture that did not come preloaded with Acela, that's allowed us to launch the data dashboard, but also has coding that can be built upon to start to drill down into some of those metrics. And that's where we're going next with the data. But it is not going to be a meaningful or informative calculation to say, oh, how long should that permit take? It should take 30 days. Because every permit is going to have complexities and responsibilities of the applicant. And the things are in flux. One of the reasons Acela data is so challenging, but that this program is so valuable, is because you're dealing with very dynamic applications that can change statuses, that could change needs, that can change reviews, that people might have to change it. And so building that data architecture and where we've gotten to now has positioned us to then go, I think, where the council is trying to lead us in this inquiry with those KPIs at the level of different tasks.
Yeah, heard a very eloquent, thoughtful response. At the end of the day, it is a, it is a sandwich shop trying to open in a, in a, in a food stall that was previously a very similar stall. And, and so I-
Councilman, if I may? I, I, I hope you're, Councilman. So Frank, love Frank, helped me process the Mill on North Avenue. It took us three years to get all those people through the permit process. It went back and forth, inspection from here and these agencies. And that's with handholding people who first time apply for permits. So it could, it is, it is, I can say this, every application is unique because you never know until you open up a wall if it's, if it's the current standard plumbing, which is the red and the blue is, or if it's old galvanized pipes, or if there's knob and two wiring versus regular wiring today. You never know until it happens. I think that's why I say you should take it offline, so that they can examine the exact pieces and the process for each person, because the data is not going to speak to it, right? I think when we get to optimization and we start talking about what thing, how long we expect a, a ticket to remain for a task in a, into the applicant's side versus the staff's side, and then that's where we start having conversations about accountability. So like, I'm happy we've gotten to a point where we're close to, thank the Lord Jesus, we're close to stabilization. But now, after we get there, the question is, can we hold people accountable by saying that the, if we're seeing this current issue, then how do we issue videos so that our applicants aren't holding on to the, the process of, because we're bottlenecking?
And I'd like to just add on to that for this purpose and still work in terms of the time constraints that you've put, put forth for us this evening. But I'd ask the councilman, has, has this applicant already applied for their permit?
So I think, I don't know if they have or they have not. But the, but this is, this conversation that was had with Zar Williams. The, but the, the bigger point here, and this is actually something I was trying to get to, and I'll end with this one, Mr. Chair, is that I think there's a lot of things that are not, there's process challenges, right, which need to be worked out. And that's why we're having these conversations, because it has something to do with, right, Acela and E-permits and all that. And then there's, there's a bigger picture like city legislative, state legislative, like things that are being required that maybe really shouldn't be required. And, and like this could go flawlessly on y'all's end, and it could go like close to flawlessly on the applicant's end, right? And, and it could still be not like an acceptable length of time for this stuff, to, to use the chair's example of the Mill North Avenue, right? Like, the Mill North Avenue is a, is a really, really important project for that area of the city. And it's like a vibe, potentially vibe changing thing for that area of the city. And, and it's, 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 you know, there's, that's, that's, that's my point. And so it's, it's not, I'm not, didn't mean to be going after y'all. I'm saying that there's-
No, we, we understand. And I just want to put a fine period on that, is that as a part of the permanent ICS work, we are talking about what is required by the state. What do we require locally? Do we need to have some of those requirements? Some of that conversation has started. There's not an answer that we have in the moment. But we are talking about where we can streamline processes and create efficiencies. So that is a part of the work that we're doing, we're just not done yet. So we're evaluating.
Yeah, got it. There's, there's processes, and then I think there's like, like legal requirements that as legislators, you know, it's, it's important for us to be aware of unnecessary, the unnecessary roadblocks and whatnot. So, Mr. Chair, sorry for running over on that one.
Totally fine. I'm going to end on a good note, Ty.
I have to, one quick one.
Just one.
Um, message board. Are we not doing the message board? Or it was the-
Sorry, well, yeah, and the deputy city administrator chided me for not focusing on it in the slide too. So I don't know if I want to talk about it at length, but yes.
So the slide that we talk about the phases, we're, we talk about as a part of phase three, that we are looking into the message board. And so that is something that we're talking about. We're talking about the ability to do so internally, or if there is another product that we might have to get off the shelf. So the, the slide that has the phases, phase one, two and three?
I don't have a slide that says one, two, phase one, two or three. Oh, here, 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 got it, got it, got it, got it, okay.
So message board is included as a part of phase three. But we are already having conversations about the ability to be able to create something internally, or if we need to, to have a third party create something for that purpose. And so those conversations are already happening.
Um, no, I appreciate you highlighting that is on here. I saw it as part of like the Be More Fast, which I thought was like further in the future. So the message board has been something that every single person that's pulled permits has said that they want. So, because it was clear and you could see where you were and all of that. So I'm glad to know that it's coming back. Hopefully it'll come back sooner than, sooner than later. Thanks.
Thank you. I think the person who was here for public testimony left out.
Unless she didn't, she's probably, her stuff is right here.
Well, I'll end with my comments and then let her testify and staff doesn't. I had a quote given to me today, and it's meaningful for this event. Fall seven times, stand up eight. I'm hard on y'all because I care about my city. I, and I care about the level of service that we deliver. But what I will not say is, and diminish is the value of not only your expertise, but the willingness to stay and fix the system. I just want to make sure you understand that while I may be hard on you, I do care about your service to this city. And that I have seen meaningful change, and I will acknowledge that because I believe in being even handed in public. I will praise you when you do well, and then I will hold you accountable when you don't. And tonight, after looking at the data and seeing what's happening, I'm thankful for the promise that you guys have showed in terms of the last six months. And that's just me just being heartfelt and saying that out loud, because sometimes we don't publicly say that all the time. And I'd rather tell you what I will say privately to somebody else in public at the same time. What I want to do is celebrate you tonight because this ain't hard. This is hard, I'm not going to lie. Creating systems, uploading them, dealing with them, and then the stresses of scared of the failure to actually fall if you make a mistake. I just want to make sure I seen that you stood up multiple times. Every time you presented a challenge, you fixed it. I'm proud of you. And I just want to say that out loud to all of you in this environment, but also let it be recorded that I said that out loud. And to you, Commissioner Kennedy, thank you for your work. It is meaningful. You have led a lot of progress in this city. And I can't sit here and not celebrate you at your, potentially your last council meeting in this role. And I'm thankful for your service to the city of Baltimore. My residents are thankful. I see the data, I've seen things move in my district. I may be hard on everybody, but I care enough to let you know that I will always say Alice Kennedy cared, and she did her best in her role. Now, for our next hearing, I just want to preface this because I believe in 360s. I just want agency to be prepared, because I've been hearing chatter among staff who have come to me. And I will take back the whistleblower, I will say that publicly. I want to hear and see, we do a meaningful conversation with our staff to understand how they're actually experiencing the system and this change. Because often lost in us delivering on product and delivering on timelines is the people that we stress on the way. I want to know what are they're seeing to help us be better? Because I've been in the staff role. We had to find those timelines, but no one was listening to the potential of an optimization that could have saved us all months. So I think that, and I'm going to challenge you guys to do that for our next quarterly hearing. Let's listen to the people who are actually experiencing the system on this side of it, on the staff side, so that we can understand what's driving our data, what's our hardships? Because some people are unafraid to speak up, and some are afraid to speak up about what can be better. I want to take that non-traditional route, because I think that's better than just keep driving. This is the thing I need you to get to. But I want to hear what's happening internally in your agencies to get there. And I don't think she's back here, so. I'm going to count to 30. We can accept a written testimony if, if she wants to- With that being said, we will accept written testimony and provide opportunity for her to testify at the next quarterly hearing. With that being said, because I recognize I did make an error in the scheduling of one of the hearings, the oversight hearing that we have for DCHD on December 23rd. You forget about that, enjoy your holiday.
That's if you don't want to be here.
And you know, you don't pay attention to dates, but I just want to say I appreciate you guys and have a good evening. We're adjourned.